Thirty, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Counselor Hosschild?
Here.
Counselor Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here.
Do any counselors have announcements they'd like to make?
Not this evening.
With none, we have no public hearings tonight. We'll pass by that item. Correspondence is on file and it's available to anyone if they want to look, but there's nothing that's urgently needed to be given to the council. No presentations at this meeting and we will move to item eight. Public discussion, that's time for individuals to address the council about any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. We will have a separate section of public discussion during each agenda item that is going to be voted on tonight. So if you're here for one of those items, you can step up and discuss it during that time that that's on the podium. Does anyone have any public discussion from people in the council chambers? Or is there anyone for public discussion online? If anyone has public discussion, please state your name and address for the record. Last call for public discussion. Is there any public discussion? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Hearing no public discussion, we will move along to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is the minutes accounts payable on a motion on a massage therapist license. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hosschild, second by Counselor Nelson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Tonight, we have three ordinances on the agenda for second reading. The first is two thousand twenty-two dash zero five. An ordinance establishing airport zoning overlay safety zones and adopting regulations. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Johnson, would you like to give us a brief explanation of this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On two thousand nineteen, the state law was amended to allow for custom zoning associated with each individual airport. The Joint Airport Zoning Board, which is known as JASB, of which Germantown is a member, has been working towards achieving custom zoning for a number of years. So in October of two thousand twenty-one, the Minnesota DOT did approve the JASB zoning ordinance. Now, as part of that, the JASB ordinance, it was contemplated or envisioned that each member community would adopt their own amendments to its zoning ordinance incorporating the applicable provisions of that JASB ordinance. So each local community is also responsible for the enforcement of that JASB ordinance and the requirements of the overlay district. So the JASB zoning ordinance is not retroactive to existing uses. If it exists today, you will continue to exist. Let's give some brief highlights. There's four zones now within the safety zones. Zone one, that's most restrictive, right around the airport, primarily composed of land that either the airport or the city of Duluth owns. There's the second zone that is off runway nine, which is on the west side of the city. That, there are some minor changes to that per the JASB ordinance and reflected in ours this evening. Particularly, it reduces the previous requirements of properties having to have an eight and minimum of three acres in size. That's been reduced to two point five. And then likewise, the amount of the site population or number of people that can congregate on that property has increased from fifteen people per acre to twenty people per acre. Zones are basically uses that had been previously envisioned in number two, still exist today. It prohibits groups where people can essentially congregate. It's churches, restaurants, movie theaters, banquet halls, stadiums, schools, hospitals, and hotel motels. Except anything that exists here currently, like for instance, there is a church in existing zone two, they can continue to exist. But if a new application came forward, we would not be able to to support that. Likewise, the last basically major change of the JASB ordinance, which is reflected in ours, is the creation of what's called a zone two point five that's off of runway three, which is the east-west runway. Sorry, north-south runway, excuse me. That two point five zone generally mirrors what exists today. What's known as either the B-zone or the B-zone with C restrictions. There's some minor prohibitions within that zoning district. Particularly, those are childcare or daycare centers, state licensed residential care facilities, adult daycare facilities serving thirteen or more people, state licensed group family daycare serving thirteen or more people, public or private schools or public or private hospitals. It's envisioned that this two point five zoning district is to protect vulnerable populations. So that was the reason it was enacted. This does not affect clinics, medical clinics, dental offices, et cetera, that way. Those can exist within that two point five. Like I said, for the most part, the the shapes of the safety zones generally mirror what we have today and it would continue to move that way going forward.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? I know Counselor Geisler's been involved in this heavily over the past several years.
Yep, other than it's been a lot of hard work by a lot of community members from all the surrounding communities and I think it's been a, it'll be a good thing.
And thank you for your involvement.
Yeah.
Anything else from council? This is a time for public comment. If any member of the public has any comment on this ordinance, please state your name and address for the record, either online or in person in council, in chambers. Is there any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero five? One last opportunity for public input on the ordinance establishing zoning overlay safety zones and adopting regulations. With no public input, I have it asked for a roll call.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero six. An ordinance amending section three-five-zero-point-zero-four, acceptance and opening of additional roads and streets of the Germantown City Code by modifying the name of Eevee Drive to read as Stevie Drive. Do we have a motion?
So moved. I'm sorry.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Hosschild. Joe, are you going to explain this one?
Yeah, just a little bit more discussion from the first reading that clarified kind of some of the reasoning behind it. But more importantly, the unanimous support of everybody who is a property that's adjacent to this. And it, despite being a unique ask, doesn't, you know, kind of lend itself to a precedent in the idea that this address or this particular drive and road has zero addresses on it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? With no comments from council, we'll move to public comment. Is there any public comment on this? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Gerald Peterson on a forty-two forty Washington Drive here in the great city of Germantown. Just wanted to give you guys a little bit of a background on why we're looking to change the name of this road. It's not a vanity thing or anything like that, but it was Dick McNutt's wish in a short synopsis of the scenario. When he bought all that property back when it was a golf course many, many years ago and he sold off and built what's now Sam's Club and many other parcels around there. In about two thousand four, two thousand five, they put the roads in that are there today, Sam's Drive, Richard Drive, and Eevee. It sat vacant for a long time after the two thousand seven recession. We then, of course, had a vision to build our little complex that we're putting up over there. And Dick thought it would just be the best thing to have that road named after Stevie because Dick's like Steve's second grandpa. They've known each other for decades and decades. They grew up, their families were tied together, and he just thought that would be the most amazing thing for him and Steve to be recognized that way. Of course, there's, that's why Steve's not here tonight because he didn't want somebody to think it was a vanity play on his part of the scenario. But I'm here for Dick McNutt tonight because he wanted that to happen. He unfortunately passed away when we first started the project. Then, of course, COVID wasn't around, so we really, or COVID was around, so we really didn't get to it, but we're pushing for that now. We went to all the property owners on the road, everybody was unanimous and in favor of it. We're also not asking anybody to change their addresses. There's no physical address on that particular street either, so nobody has to change their envelopes or anything like that. So we just thought it would be a nice way to memorialize Mr. McNutt and his wishes. You guys have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment, either in chambers or online? If so, please state your name and address for the record. We will have one last opportunity for public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero six. With no additional public comment, I'd ask for a roll call.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero seven. An ordinance amending title two of the Germantown City Code by amending the official zoning map, forty-seven ninety-eight Miller Trunk Highway. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Hosschild. Mr. Johnson, would you address this one?
Great, thank you again. This is an application for rezoning of two acres in the northwest corner of the property at forty-seven ninety-eight Miller Trunk Highway. This is a portion of the overall seventy-four acre property. It's the Sunrise Cemetery. To give a little background history, the applicant back in two thousand nineteen had looked to the rezon and interior one acre of this property. At that point, it was not supported as it, there was no immediate adjacent C zoning associated with that property. Now, the applicant has come forward for the application for the two full acres to be rezoned from P public to C commercial. And this now does a but property that's owned commercial in the northwest corner at the intersection of Arrowhead and Stepner. There's potential development on these both two interior lots that way. The next step, assuming this is supported or approved by city council, is there would be a property split pursued by the applicant. And then any future development work would go through what's known as this commercial industrial development permit. So that would receive basically review and approval by the planning commission should something come forward at a later date.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, we will move to public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance? If so, state your name and address for the record. Is there any public comment from anyone either in chambers or online to ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero seven? We will have one last opportunity for public comment. If so, please state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolutions, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six one. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a cooperation agreement regarding the Duluth International Airport Joint Zoning Board and the Duluth International Airport zoning ordinance. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hosschild, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, councilors, this is a, an agreement between the city of Duluth and the city of Germantown in which the city of Duluth will indemnify the city of Germantown for reliability stemming from the zoning, airport zoning regulations that you just passed earlier in this meeting. There are two areas where there's some potential liability, namely inverse condemnation and then personal injury in the case of if there was a plane that crashed in one of these zones. And by agreeing to this agreement, the city of Duluth will take that liability and it will not liable the city of Germantown. So I would recommend city pass this decision.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from counselors? Hearing none, do we have any comments from the general public about this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six one? Is there any public comment on the resolution for the cooperation agreement between the city of Duluth in reference to the Duluth International Airport zoning ordinance? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six two. Resolution authorizing a summary of an ordinance establishing airport zoning overlay safety zones and adopting regulations of the Germantown zoning code. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Geisler. This is basically a summary of ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero five as passed earlier. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six two? Is there any public input on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six three. Resolution providing a grant to the Germantown Area Hockey Association. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hosschild, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Johnson, this is a three thousand dollar grant towards their water bill for the watering of the outdoor ice surfaces that the Germantown Hockey Association has?
Yes, this is correct. This is an increase from two thousand dollars, which the city has previously provided by way of a grant. That's been increased to three thousand dollars. That is now matching with the grant that the city provides to Germantown Youth Soccer.
Thank you. And this is under the premise that the outdoor ice rinks benefit the whole community by the community having access to them. And they are open to the community for use.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six three? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public input on the resolution providing a grant to the Germantown Area Hockey Association? Last opportunity for public input on this resolution. If you have any, please state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six four. Resolution approving cooperative agreement with St. Louis County, CP zero-zero-nine-one dash six-eight-one-three-six-one, construction of Haynes Road, Frontage Road, within the city of Germantown Corporate Limits. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Ball, can you fill us in on this?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. So this is a, an agreement with St. Louis County to make improvements to the the frontage road. It's, it's kind of served as a driveway to Quick Trip. And so the agreement states that the county will participate in half the cost of the construction of that. And it also states that the agreement relieves the county from any future ownership or maintenance of that frontage road.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six four? Is there any public input on this agreement between the city of Germantown and St. Louis County? Roll call, please.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six five. Resolution approving St. Louis County SAP number zero-six-nine-zero-seven-zero-zero-five-seven, CP NO zero-zero-one-three-five-three-three-zero-two-eight-five, county state aid highway number thirteen, Midway Road, within the city of Germantown Corporate Limits. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Hosschild. This, David, is the turn lanes on Midway Road at Arrowhead Road for construction in two thousand twenty-three?
Correct.
Anything else? Just an agreement to give consent to them?
Right, this is just a, you know, municipal consent. It's all county cost project. They're going to add a turn lane on Midway Road onto to West Arrow. Nope. Arrowhead Road. And I believe they're going to do this under traffic as well, and it's slated for two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six five? If so, please state your name and address. Is there any public input on this resolution? Last opportunity for public input, and I won't read all those numbers over again. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six six. Resolution approving a first amendment to the final plat of Peyton Acres Phase One B and imposing conditions on the final plat. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Hosschild. Mr. Eric Johnson, would you please fill us in on this?
Yes, thank you very much. In two thousand twenty-one, the applicant GLG Enterprises had received preliminary and final plat approval for Phase One B of Peyton Acres. At that time, that Phase One B consisted of ten single-family residential lots with the remainder of the property being put into an old lot. Since that time, the applicant has been doing a lot of work on site and been looking at the existing drainage patterns associated with the property. The original plat had envisioned or at least proposed a stormwater easement in the lower southeast corner of the property, which was incorporated on one of the lots. Once again, since the applicant has been looking at this property further and looking at the existing drainage patterns, it became apparent that the stormwater pond better served to move further to the east into the future Phase One C. So this amended application, it's amended plat this evening eliminates that easement associated with the pond. And then lastly, the applicant had been approached by a potential lot buyer on the north portion. Initially, there's lot four, which is about one acre in size. A person had inquired about purchasing the property to the east of that and it basically enlarging the size of that lot. And so in order to accommodate that, this easterly property line of the proposed plat has been amended or is proposed to be amended in order to show this larger lot associated with number four. So once again, there's no changes, at least to the number of lots associated with this amended plat. It still stays at ten.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council on this? Hearing none, are there any public comments on this? If so, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Jason Warner, thirty-nine seventy-one Stepner Road, Germantown. Stormwater retention pond that was supposed to be in part B, is that going to be built prior to part C or will it be built on part C while part B is being developed? Or how exactly is that going to work this period of time? So?
We have an answer from our engineer.
Okay, so if I understand the question correctly, is the stormwater improvements for one B going to be built as part of one C?
Yes.
And our, per our stormwater ordinance, that stormwater treatment needs to be built?
Prior to development.
Prior to development. So even though it's on one C, the treatment for one B will be built as they're developing one B.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Okay. You're up.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any more public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six six? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six seven. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the tower and ground lease agreement between the city of Germantown and T-Mobile Central LLC. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hosschild, second by Counselor Geisler. And we'll have our city attorney, Mr. Johnson, comment on this.
Mayor, councilors, there's two things that brought about this particular resolution. The first being that T-Mobile and Sprint have merged as the company and the second being changes in technology. And so there was a request to the city to to take an existing lease on that tower and to modify it to accommodate these two changes. The city decided it was more appropriate to do a new lease. And so we have prepared a new lease that follows the same basic structure as the previous lease arrangements. But as, so antennas that will go up on the top of the water tower, they will pay the city approximately twenty-three thousand dollars a year for the rent for that space. That lease rate will go up five percent per year and the lease will run for ten years. And assuming you approve this tonight, the resolution is subject to the engineers' review to make sure that the structure can take the weight and there is no interference from this new technology that's going up on top of the tower.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? With no questions or comments, do we have any public comment on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six seven? Does anyone have public comment on the lease agreement between city of Germantown and T-Mobile? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Hosschild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six eight. Resolution approving pay request number one for reconditioning of Highway fifty-three water tower, water improvement district number three eighteen, to Osseo Construction Company LLC in the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Ball?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. So this is passment number one for the reconditioning of Water Tower one up off of Highway fifty-three. So it's partial payment on most- So it's partial payment and most of it is for mobilization and setting up their, uh, containment system.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any council comment or questions? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six eight? Is there any public input on this resolution? Roll call, please. Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Last item on the agenda before the end is resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six nine. Resolution awarding contract for one, for one ton pickup to North Country GM in the amount of fifty thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars plus applicable taxes and fees. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Hostchild. This is to replace a one-ton pickup that has already been sold because the frame rusted out. Uh, then it was twenty-one years old when I went down the road. Uh, we have an opportunity to order it next week for a fifteen-day window. Uh, this also will need some later additions and equipment added to it. Um, do we have any questions from council on this? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash six nine? Is there any public input on the resolution to purchase a new one-ton pickup from North Country GM? If there is any public input, please state your name and address for the record.
Roll call, please. Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next on the agenda is a motion to recess to a special meeting Wednesday, May eighteenth at five PM for a joint meeting with HITA. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you all. Have a good evening.